...and so forth and so on, and I'm going to ask if anyone is video or audio taping it.
Yes.
And that would be both?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'll give you this one. All right, the reason for tonight, just a working meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee strictly to discuss how we're going to work out, try to work the budgets and so forth out for annual town meetings and special town meetings, and we get the articles for that, only because we seem to have a problem with a forum on the Finance Committee, therefore, we wanted to come up with some way to do it to make sure that we have everything done in time, and time is getting very close.
Time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence. So I think what the idea was tonight was try to get together and talk some of the budgets at least, so we can go over that. Before I get into anything, let me ask Lorena, have you done anything with the remuneration schedule yet?
Yes, gentlemen, I did, for the Director of the Board, provided a memo, and we proposed remuneration spec- remuneration wage classification schedule.
Thank you. Okay, we have one for Finance?
Finance already has them.
Okay.
Do you have that paperwork?
The one with the memo?
Does that one have the paperwork? For the step increases?
Let me go get it.
Step increases that we had on those.
Now, we're going to discuss this again, the Board of Selectmen will discuss it in an open meeting. Again, this is an open meeting, but it's not televised, and basically, so everybody understands what happened, we, in order to step in line with what the state wants, which would be $10 an hour, as of the-
Nine this year.
Nine this year, $10 next year.
Correct. And 11, 116.
That's correct. So for fiscal, for, well, for the annual town meeting in May, what we've basically done is take the, I'll wait for you. You can sit right there. All right, I'm just going to start again, we'll go very quickly. Purpose of the meeting is to meet for the Finance Committee and the Board, to make sure that we have a forum for the Finance Committee, because we have to work on the budgets for the annual town meetings, because it's getting very close. So that's the reason we called tonight to see if we could pull in a book at it, to make sure that we can start the process. Now, we're just talking about the pay and classification, the remuneration schedule for that. This year, the minimum wage in Massachusetts is now $9 an hour. We fixed that, there was only one thing, and I'll let you go into that one.
Of the election workers. So we checked with clerk's office, she had enough money in her, in her line item there to cover that increase for those workers remaining this year. So we are, it's not a state mandate, it's a recommendation. So it's, it's that incident we have to do, and we would like to follow in line with the minimum wage requirements for, for business. Also, it has to be, you know, voted on in the town floor, so that's the, we just pushed through, into the town floor.
In May?
In May, but we want to recommend that everybody plans for this now. Worst-case scenario is it doesn't pass on the floor, the money's been allocated for covering. So we want to have a plan for this increase and a plan for this change in the wage classification this year. I'm going to give my heads up on what's going to look like in year two or three.
So from there, the pay that we did, as I said, this year is taken care of, the $9 an hour everybody's making is not a problem there. Now, for next year, this coming year, it's $10 an hour in 2016.
16, June.
16, it's $10 an hour. So what the town, what we're proposing to do is we took the remuneration schedule and what was minimum before, there was a minimum amount before that everybody got paid when they came in, that was dropped. We took step one, made it minimum, step two made it step one, and all the way down the line.
That's what we're looking at.
That's what you're looking at. Then, to make sure we still had the 10 steps that were, that we had, we added, we added another step. We didn't add a step, we added a amount in that step, okay? So that would take care of 2016. We haven't completely decided how we're going to do 2017 yet. We're going to wear and see if this, if this passes, we can then work on it.
Right.
But this is what we're telling everybody to base their budgets on right now. It's going to, it's, we thought about it in another way, we thought about doing two, two of them, the low end and the high. The problem becomes is, is if we have a book and it's got one figure in it. So the easiest way is to plan for high, if it doesn't pass, if they don't get to use it, they, they would have to go back to the schedule that we currently have. But, but what I've done, I think with Lorena, doing the same way. So we've got
the two scenarios. We've got, the first scenario is that it doesn't pass.
Mm-hmm.
The second scenario is that it does, in these spreadsheets we're working on. So at what point do we, we have to, we have to print a budget, a book.
That, that's what we're talking about. The problem with printing a book, you're going to have to print it one way or the other.
I think the thing you should probably do is go with the higher one.
That's what, that's what the Board is suggesting, to go with the higher one.
That's what I would say.
Okay, and if it doesn't pass, everything reverts back to the other one.
Right.
That could leave a little bit of money in the, in people's budgets. We had our opinion before that we couldn't stop them from using it, but we can stop them from how many hours they take. So-
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, there was suggested that we possibly have an available handout, Scenario B, if it doesn't pass, that voters could then look and say, okay, this didn't pass, but now we're going to vote on what's in their hand.
If they don't have to vote, the one in your hand already, okay, is the, is what is, what we revert back to. Yeah, if you would have to have budgets for almost every department, if you were to do it the other way, we have to take it, put the high point of the book, and have, have a handout for, for the low point.
For the low point. And that way, they would at least have something in their hand and say, okay. So when the moderator's up there, he can say, okay, now we're voting on omnibus budget based on figures in the handout versus figures in the-
I don't have a problem with that, but I want to plan-
He just suggested-
But I want to plan for the high of the two. And what we've basically done is the same thing. There's, it wasn't a percentage at all, there was no percentages involved, any, I chuckled because we both know why I say that, Kenny.
You don't believe it.
So there's no percentages in that at all. It's not a cost of living, it's nothing like that, it's strictly to bring it up, and it's all based on certain, certain amount between steps, whether it be 23 or 30, whatever it might be. What's there now is what?
30 cents.
Okay, is what it would be. So it's not a cost of living, and everybody gets the same, just to bring it up to that $10 an hour. And we can prepare two, I don't really care, but I want to plan on the highest one right now. And we're going to explain it. And we're going to tell them that they don't have to vote for it. We feel that somehow it's not fair to have the town employees under everybody else. If the $10 is the minimum amount, or minimum wage, that's what it should be for the town also. And that's the reason we did it.
Looking through the schedule, it's basically only one category where they're below $10.
It very possibly could be.
I mean, they're all over the minimum right now.
Yeah, but the problem we had though is if you only did one, it's going to knock the schedule itself out, out of whack.
No, what I'm saying, this here shows that they, they're over the $10 limit.
Yeah.
The only, the only one which is the category.
Mm-hmm.
Is below the schedule.
So that'll, that'll take care of that. The big whack will come in 2017. We have to come up with a way to do that. But that's what we're telling, what we'd like you to base it on.
Well, a big whack is really a relative term, because when I was doing this today, it's small, I mean, it's not even any amount of money that's going to, so far, that's even going to affect anything. I mean, it's $300 here, $200 there. When we add it up, it's not going to be $100,000.
About 18, about 18,000, I think.
Yeah, I think that.
Eighteen to 20,000.
Yeah.
I think it's eighteen to 20,000.
We have to make the public aware, but the fact is, it's really not going to affect us as taxpayers to some astronomical degree, like a $6 million budget.
No, no. Even, even if, even if we were to do kind of the same thing in, in the next year, it's still going to be some, double what we did. So it's still not going to be astronomical.
But it gets us in line with other communities who have already done it.
That's correct, absolutely. That being the reason. If there's no other questions, you know what? I'll turn it over to you.
Well, what Lorena and Becky and I worked on today, we've got seven or eight departments here that we can review because we have their, their schedules already. The printout I handed you is actual budget for 2014, and our current budget, what we've expanded to 225.15, and then the two categories that have been handed in to us with regard to those increases. So, anything highlighted, it's lightly highlighted on yours, is an increase or a decrease. For the Selectmen's budget, there is a potential increase of 11,000 or 12,000 dollars. One of those is salary-driven, and one of those is the street lighting drove that up just about four, that $5,000. I wasn't really sure why.
You have a substantial increase, National Grid declared 37 percent.
Right. So if that's what the reason is, that's what we have to tell the people, you know, it's just, we all felt that.
Which one are you looking at?
If you look at the second page, though, what the street lighting, that you've got your three pieces of your budget outlined for the total. So we look at Selectmen total.
Mr. Chairman, for me, perhaps it might be easier.
Yeah, if you look at Lorena's copy, what she's done is she's put it in such a way that you can see the over or the, or the shortage.
Mr. Chairman, can I just print it up one more time? If we just follow this?
That's what I'm trying to do. Oh.
It just may be easier.
Okay, I did it in the order that you gave me.
My, oh, from the coverage.
Just tell me where we are.
We're at Selectmen.
Selectmen, yep.
Okay.
And that looks like this. Everybody has it? Looks like this. It's on the packet that has-
Did you get one of these?
Break it, break it.
Can you have another one?
Everybody's on the same page, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
And that one more. Oh, I'm sorry. Sir? All right. I'm sorry.
So, the other, the other raise was at Selectmen's Assistant. Can you explain how that's working and why that's happening, so that everybody can understand it?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, the Board had some time ago had dictated that the Selectmen's Assistant position with the Board of Selectmen's Office warranted a 10-hour-a-week limitation. Last year, Dugan and Burton's, it was only budgeted for six hours, so that's why you see the substantial increase there.
Yeah.
That's the makeup for the hours. That was not budgeted last year. So we are, we are short actually in this fiscal '15 budget, and we can address that at a different point in time. But going forward, it accounts, if you look at the schedule there, it's the rate times 10 times 52 and a half weeks, and that's your amount.
So we're in, we're going to deficit this one this year, right?
What about Dan?
Again, deficit's been, technically, we have to ask for rat.
Again, that's the material that the Board will present to PINCOM.
So is this actually supposed to be that Secretary, Selectmen's Secretary line?
We used to have a Secretary, a, we used to have Jean Anne Angela at one time, which was about 19 hours a week, 19 and a half hours a week. We cut it back to only one, we never filled the position a second time. Then, when we started changing over, Lorena and so forth came on, we said, we got to put something back in there, because it's been very busy and you have to learn what everything do. So we wanted 10 hours a week. Somehow it got messed up and only put six in. We're not going back to 19 and a half or anything, but we'd like to keep it at 10.
I think it's talking about the title.
Right.
Okay, what happened is when Jean retired, the way that the retirement package came, they could not, they could only backfill Jean's job, so many hours the first year, so many hours the second year, so many hours the third year. After the third year, it could be fully funded. So what they did is to have Angela, they changed the title to Selectmen's Assistant. Angela took that position, and then it was Selectmen's Secretary. And then after the three years, when Lorena came, they were able to go back to have this administrative secretary. But that's what it was after retirement.
I just wondered if I should eliminate that line.
Yes, Selectmen's Secretary, yes. I would say it's a.
No, that way, there's no question that you have now three.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
See where it says zero, Selectmen's Secretary? She's the-
I have no more questions for the Board, if the rest of the Finance Committee has something. Do you have any other questions?
No.
And again, just going back to that for Selectmen's budget, there was a decrease in wages for Shepherd Building salaries. That would be for Dan and Jenny, because I overestimated, you know. Last year, I offered extra time for when Dan does some extra work.
Mm-hmm.
When I went back to look at the record, we didn't use the time, so I cut that by $500. But that's why you see-
What line are you going to use then?
That Shepherd Building salary, page one.
Oh.
If you see across, it says 241 negative difference from fiscal '15. Obviously, Shepherd Building expenses, pretty detailed and outlined. Understand that those numbers are based on here, which I've taken the entire amounts, and I've divided by 12, and that's how I come up with those numbers. So you have a 31, $3100 increase there. We've eliminated via town meeting vote to stop publishing special town meetings in the newspaper. So that's why you see a $700 credit there for reduction rather. And then obviously, the most significant change is, is in the cost of electricity. So those are, those are variable. We have a volatile market.
Yeah. I found one discrepancy I just need to verify. I've got Parking Clerk at 150, but in the report generated by Madeline, it says it should be 100. So I'm not sure which one of those is correct.
Parking Clerk.
Any expense?
She has 600, that, that number's correct, 150 is for the expense.
Well, I've got the expenses 100 as well in the, in the general ledger, and you've got 150, so I just have a discrepancy there.
I, I honestly can't speak to her expenses. I know they're minimum at best, so.
Yeah. I just want it to be right, that's all, since we're talking about it, and we have no other to check.
I barely remember last year, we might, we may have brought that $50, yeah.
166?
I know it was 16. Salary is 675, and Parking Clerk's supply is 100, and then 100 for the Service Bureau.
So make that little correction on your, I'll correct it. For our next meeting, I'll have this corrected from what we do tonight.
I would assume that's correct. We've got a PINCOM record. Double check.
And I beg with my mouth.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Next one, Town Clerk?
Yep.
That came in level funded increases due to contractual increases. That's straightforward.
Yeah. I'm going to ask you to tell them.
First one.
Not for me. Questions, concerns? Any questions or concerns about that, upset? Assessors?
This was submitted by the Assessors Department. It does outline projected budget, and then it also reflects a proposed budget based on the wage increases. I did fine tune this because of the formula. She used 52.2 weeks, and I confirmed it with Madeline, it's 55, 52.5 is the calculation. So that's why you see the handwritten.
So is this correct?
So the numbers down here on the bottom.
The handwritten.
The handwritten numbers are correct.
So this was based upon what, Madeline?
She, it, it 50, but we, how I have to do it for the auditors, a week is considered 10, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10. So one day would be .2, two days would be .4. The Shepherd Building only works four days.
Right.
So ours would be .25, .50, .75, 1. So instead of 52.2, it's 52 and a half, because we only work four days.
Yeah.
The other thing she wanted to reference on here, PINCOM had noted that on her mapping, you had a lower figure, I can't read it because I think it said $3,200, and in fact, it was $5,600 for last year.
Mapping, we had $5,600.
So whatever she, this was-
Can we check that with our book?
Yeah.
So she just wanted to make sure that that was clear?
Yeah, 50 was bumped up to 5,600.
I had 56 as well. So is she saying that's right or wrong?
That is correct, 5,600.
On the, on your spread, the spreadsheet that was put out, that's the one that's wrong, it said 30.
38. She x'd it out.
All right. Yeah, I already changed it, because I found it.
The second part of her submission here, and I don't know that this is appropriate for the budget discussion, but the, the Board of Assessors have advised the Board that Ms. Coach has achieved her final and seventh course, and she's eligible for the Massachusetts accredited Assessor's Certificate. And so she would like the Board to entertain a $1,000 stipend slash, I don't know what you want to call it. I don't know if you call it stipend?
Just stipend.
Stipend. Similar to that, which is obtained by President or Account clerk, against tax collectors.
We had this discussion last year, and Lorena and Town Clerk discussed this.
Well, and the, the thing to remember too, this is, if this is something that the Board does consider, we would require a town vote.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd have to be an article supported.
Yeah, correct. Put it as a, as, put it as a tentative article when we look at them, you can see what we're going to do.
Is that protocol? When she has specific education, that she would automatically get a stipend, or how does it work?
We, we pay certain people stipends if they get certain degree of education.
It's a statute. This statute allows $1,000 for the tax collector, right? There was a new category, the Town Clerk has their own category, one for the Assessor. There is none for the Account. You can't, association has tried to get a pass, they've never gotten the list.
So you can, you can entertain it and decide upon yourself within the community where you want to do it, but it's not mandated?
No, it's not mandated, and we have to go through town meeting if we do it. So it would have to be a separate article.
The other part, and you gentlemen have this memo in front of you, she's, the, her Board is suggesting an additional 55 cents per hour to be added. However, if in fact it is considered to be a stipend, it should follow the same rule as the other stipends, paid monthly.
It would have to be a stipend.
Yeah, right.
In a separate line item.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody else comes in and doesn't have it, the stipend's going to go away. We add that salary in, we add that amount into the salary, it's going to stay, so.
Such is what Depp Leff is, the stipend, when Depp Leff.
Yeah, it's going to be a stipend.
Any further questions on the assessment?
I'm not sure I understand the 55 cents thing.
What, the intent there is, is to suggest that the $1,000 be broken up into an hourly rate and added to her.
Oh, 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 okay. Got it. Got it.
That's not to suggest the Board won't consider it, it's the method by which it is.
Go ahead, you pay.
Any further questions on the assessment? Town Clerk. Town Clerk has submitted a level funded budget. Her request, however, is to realign some appropriations in her line items. She'd like to take from her Town Clerk expense line $1,000 and reallocate that to the registrars for listing. Again, level funded, just making that alteration. And then obviously, we would have to add the additional $243 to make up for that wage increase on the condo wage salary account.
Mm-hmm. That's fine, level funded, don't care.
So that budget becomes $74,376.
376?
74, 376. See how I arrived with that?
Yeah.
And the Board's okay with changing the appropriations?
It's no problem. I think basically what we told her, we don't really care how she gets to the level funded, but if she wants to move things around, it's fine.
Any further questions on Town Clerk? The next one is the Planning Board. This one is also level funded with the exception of step increase, which is a contractual. On the bottom of your sheet, you'll see the secondary submission to include the proposed increase in wages. So you're looking at 11, 42, 50.
Can you explain to the Board, the Finance Committee, why it's not with the penny, the difference in the penny please?
They want to know how, why she's not.
This is the one we talked about where it said-
Oh, the 52 versus 53?
52 versus 53. But you need to hear it from them, because I've heard it four times now.
What is it again?
Why Becky is, you moved Becky up a step, but I'm not penny leader.
If, the Board of Selectmen has by the A classification and remuneration schedule the right to move anybody with a vote at a, at a Selectmen's meeting up within one cent of the next high, next step. We don't have to go to town meeting to do that. If we wanted to move them completely to the next step, we'd have to go to town meeting. But somewhere within the, where it was written up, the Board has the right to move somebody up to within that one penny of the next step. We did that for Becky, because it's something that she's handling for the Board of Selectmen now. It was originally under Planning Board and so forth, but she's handling, handling more sensitive things for the Board of Selectmen, so we moved that up, and she would get up, moved up every time she gets a step.
She is, it's important to say, you are the one employee that this affects, right, right now?
Yes.
So it's not that everybody's got, in this circumstance, this is the one circumstance. And when we go forward next year, it will come up again.
I'll always be within that one penny.
Right, that one penny.
Yeah.
So it's not going to affect anybody else until-
That was only because of the, with Angela-
That was only because of the, with Angela leaving, there was nobody in the office, the extra work that ended up taken on.
Okay.
Level planning?
Level planning. Penny's fine.
Next one was the planner. That's level funded as well.
12, we're done.
Are we supporting the planner?
As of right now, we have no decision to make on anything at this stage. It'll stay like it is until the Board discusses it more. Further discussion?
As we've been asked, so I wanted to...
Might be a discussion at some point in the near future decide if we want to go to a full-time planner and/or make it planning slash grant writer and everything else. The Board will be looking at that very shortly.
So leaving it in, so it's going to be left in the budget for next year?
It's going to be left there for now. There could be changes made at town meeting.
Okay.
Any further questions? And then we want to go to the next one.
Wait a minute. Okay, go ahead.
It's, it's out of order, but it's part of the whole...
Yeah, that one's fine.
Number four. Again, this is a level funded budget with the exception of contractual increases due steps. The bottom portion of your page reflects the, the increase in the renumeration schedule.
So again, it's like a $230 difference. It's not going to change cultural or history.
Any further questions?
Not me.
$100 budget? This is not the typical bridge. It was submitted by Mr. Patrick Swain. He is looking at an increase in veteran's benefits line item. He has indicated to me he's added some individuals to his roster. So that's why you have the, the increase there. He is also, just as a precursor, he is going to be short this fiscal year. So he'll be approaching the Board and PINCOM.
And why is he short?
Because he's added individuals to the roster.
Just a background information on veteran services. He can, how can I put this? He can put any number he wants in there. It is a mandated by the state type of thing. So whatever he has and whatever veterans he has on there, he has to pay it. And that, it's 75% reimbursable to the town, takes about a year. But we get about 75% back on that. But the, he, he has the right, he has to keep spending. He can't cut anybody off. And if he adds anybody, he automatically has to pay it. It's a...
So this reflects 10 more people or whatever, right? He has a roster and he keeps that roster.
He has a roster. The only people that really, the, the only people that, how can I put this? The town accountant would see the list of names and the Board of Selectmen would see the list of names to a certain degree. 100% confidential. The Board can't ask too many questions, can't call them into a meeting, ask any questions. It's strictly 100% confidential and we have to pay.
And the Treasurer has other information. That's just...
That's correct. And he has to file a monthly report.
But he, he accounts to somebody, so...
Yes, he accounts to the Treasurer, Billy. He files it and...
Just so people know that.
Yep.
No, he has to file a report once a month. The report goes to the Treasurer. Treasurer has to sign off on the report also. It goes into the state. Then I don't, I think the accountant gets a copy back of, or, I know, I know the veteran's agent gets a copy back of when the money's going to be sent and how much it'll be.
And that's what comes through the Treasury.
Right. So there is, there is a report all the way around.
The other thing too is, yeah, so salary in surrounding towns is about $100 a month. He's asking the Board to consider raising his ESO salary.
I know how many, well, let me ask Madeline. I know that it seems to be that this is the highest it's ever been for veteran services that I can remember. I know he's putting in a lot of time and so forth. I don't really have a problem with the $3,600.
Because it's, it's quite a piece of...
Yeah, so I have no problem with the 36. I think that actually might be low, so I'll be happy to give him the 36. And I'd like to keep him as long as we can because now veteran's agent has to get trained in Boston. They have to go...
Now, number four.
They have to go to about two weeks' training or so in Boston. Lucky if you can get somebody to do that.
That everybody realizes, number four is asking for an increase, okay? That is an old article that's been sitting there. So this money has just carried over. So I think is what he's saying. He wants $2,000 to be added to the 15 over, correct?
What's that? Say that again.
That, that reads on roll number four.
Number four.
That's an article on the...
It's in the bigger...
Let's see the big one.
Oh, okay.
The very last page.
Does that refer to the Memorial Library?
Yes.
Yeah, but it does the work that they're doing, but this article's been on the books since I've been here and it's been four. So it's not technically a line item. It's an article.
Turn on your...
Right, and if this is my opinion, if this gets approved, then I think PINCOM should make it a line item in this budget.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with that. That, there's a lot of work done by Sean LeBeuf and our veteran's agent, Jimmy Cordak, and everybody else down in front of the library. They picked, they took the trees and stuff out of there and made it look very nice. So I have no problem with that.
Do I put the total, Madeline, or just the article appropriation?
It's kind of hard, six of one half thousand the other, because if he doesn't spend it all, it actually should carry over. Then it would be considered a encumbrance unless you want to vote to leave it as an article. Maybe that might be the way to go.
Only because will we have to give it back to General Fund?
Well, if you don't close it out, but it could remain open, but then it would be show of honor, so it's encumbered. So maybe keeping it as an article, just adding to the article.
Yeah, I think we better dance to the article.
I think so too.
All right, and I'll just bring up one item. Item number five, he lists here as a merit parade. He references here 1,800, which is technically sits on the Board of Selectmen's budget. He was looking to increase that.
$200, right?
$200.
Increase.
So obviously that changes the numbers on the Board of Selectmen's budget.
Just grab the cost and...
I have no problem with that.
So change to 2,000 for that area?
That was actually a very nice program last year too. A lot better than usual.
So on the Board of Selectmen's budget, page one on the bottom, filed up from 1,800 to 2,000.
And the next thing we say is we leave it to the, we leave it to the Finance Committee when they want to get together for any other things. We can do it the same six, at 6 o'clock at night, or whatever it might be. Just let us know.
Well, I would prefer it only because now that I've got this spreadsheet under control today and Lorena furnished me with the budgets that were sent to her. I'll work on this this week to upgrade that to our Thursday meeting. We'll get to review those before next week at 6 o'clock.
Fine.
And then we have some that have not submitted their budgets and I'm sending an email out tonight. Lorena approved it for me. So I'll send it out tonight, alerting them that we have not received their budgets. We need to see them soon. We've also, do you have our letter? I've asked that the larger, the larger boards, when they, we have a sign-up sheet in the Selectmen's office. So I've asked that the larger boards put in more time, back to back, so that if they, if they need to take an hour, they can. And we've suggested that if you've level funded your budget or level funded contract increase budget, you may choose not to come before us. If we have questions, we'll call them. But if we, like we reviewed tonight. Can I send an email to those departments saying that we've reviewed their budgets, but I... But we haven't voted, so should I wait till, should I just tell them we've reviewed them? Or should I say that we reviewed them and appro, I mean, we haven't really approved anything?
My suggestion would be say that you have reviewed them and tentatively approved them.
Intentively.
Tentatively approved, conditionally upon a vote.
Are you posted for tonight?
No, they're not. Actually, we are. They're not, but you're meeting Thursday.
We're meeting Thursday.
I was going to say, you got a floor.
Yeah, yeah, well, you could actually...
Actually, Thursday, I can't, I have a mission meeting.
So I can't do this tonight.
We can do this. We have the right to do this. What we discussed tonight is what you'd like to be able to send to...
The people that, the boards that we've reviewed tonight.
Yeah.
If we have our all in agreement and want to do a vote, we can, or whatever you...
But we're not posted for that. What we could do. Let's meet at 6 o'clock next week. Write a letter telling that you tentatively approved it and dict upon a vote. If Steve can't make it next week, we'll do it in the Selectmen's. You put a little article on for a Selectmen's meeting on the agenda to vote on it.
Okay. All right, next is that?
Yeah, so you post it for 6 o'clock, same thing next week.
Next Tuesday.
And add, add to our meeting next Tuesday that there'd be a vote for on budgets.
Yeah, you're 7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock. We can legally do that. We have a recommendation from Finance tonight. They need to vote on it. They can, we can do it next Tuesday. And then we'll go, what else you have to go over next Tuesday, whatever you have.
Well, our intent is to then clean up another group like we did tonight and get it, get it going.
Let's plan on this, that every Tuesday at 6 o'clock, for the time being, for the next two or three weeks, we'll plan on having it here so that we can get you people going on a report.
If we do it on Tuesdays, I want to get the larger ones, school or highway or, you have a given time.
Yeah.
Kids are coming in.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we put in our letter, select, choose an hour.
So let's do that, okay?
Especially in school, army, project...
I think Superintendent Castigian, we need even to give him quite a bit of time.
Yeah.
He's, so, his budget will be high until the end of March. And then we'll, then he has to give us a budget by, by the end of March, which he can only go down on, he can't go up on. Which will be interesting. Very good. Thank you. I'm going to contain a...
So what are you going to do? You're going to send it out tonight?
I'm going to send out the...
Reset.
Tentatively.
Okay, for the reset at quarter of 7 till 7 o'clock.
To our regulation. They'll vote to accept it.
Well, we can't, we can't, we just won't get a vote on it either.
That's why he's saying they'll vote on it at their meeting because we won't have a quarter.